I think Melissa, if I'm not mistaken. We don't have a Melissa, right? Okay, and then Lauren Wilson, is Lauren here?
No.
Okay, so.
Oh, Melissa is in the. Uh, these, so I'm going to.
And Hogan is in the, I hope I'm not slaughtering anyone's names. I apologize in advance.
I'm going to promote them to analysts.
Okay, do you want to start? Okay, okay, so I'm gonna mute and you can officially kick off the event.
You're muted, Dr. Rosanna.
Salaam alaikum all, welcome to the Muslim Unity Center, Meet the Candidate event. We have dedicated this event to the school boards. So we welcome everyone with us tonight. Um, on behalf of the Mas Community Engagement Committee and Engage Michigan, I would like to welcome you to our. Our primary election, meet the candidates event. My name is Dr. Rosanna Harris and I'm a member of the Community Engagement Committee. Many months of planning and had hard work have went into organizing this event. And gathering the various candidates who are in attendance today. The goal of this event is to give our congregation a chance to participate in the Civic Society of Oakland County in Michigan. As Muslims, our religion teaches us to be involved in our local communities, to engage with people and promote goodness. As well prevent harm and evil. In other words, we have a duty to be civically engaged. Our congregation wants to be heard on these issues, but to do that, we must engage more with candidates. Collected officials and local and state governments, and tonight we have the school boards. That's the purpose of this event, to provide a platform to engage with these candidates today. This event is not an endorsement of any candidate or party, we are simply providing a platform. For all candidates to speak to our community. This event is a strictly nonpartisan event. The committee, messaged and engaged staff are attending and participating in a strictly nonpartisan and non-endorsed capacity. And now I hand it over to Dr. Al Gemal.
Thank you, Rosanna, and good evening, everyone. My name is Deema Al Gemal. I am. A part of the Civic Engagement Committee at the Muslim Unity Center in my professional life. I'm the Director of Capital Movement Planning. Uh, at Great Lakes Water Authority. I want to start by thanking you all for being here today and helping our community make educated decisions as Dr. Harris mentioned. Uh, before I move on, I would like to, I would like to have Rex, uh, my partner in mediating today, uh, introduce himself. And then we'll have some housekeeping before we actually start. So Rex, can you please unmute and introduce yourself?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Dr. Deema and Dr. Rosanna. My name is Rex Zarko, good evening, everyone. I am the Policy and Organizing Associate for Engage Michigan. Uh, it's a pleasure to see you all here today engaging with our community and. Using this space for us all to be informed on the civically related matters. Uh, that affect us all directly and locally. Uh, so I am very much looking forward to hearing from all of you and to our conversation together. And I would like to echo everything that was previously said by. Uh, my colleagues in the, in the call as well. So looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rex. And just out of housekeeping, uh, can you please mute yourself unless you are speaking? Uh, uh, our participants do not have the ability to. Basically, uh, engage or you won't see any pictures in this because it's a webinar, but eventually. Uh, we will share it on Facebook and it is being live streamed as we speak, uh, as well. Uh, just how are we gonna conduct the format of this event? There will be, uh. One question for each candidate, uh, uh, that will start with introducing himself and then the second question will, will go. Uh, will, uh, will, will be presented by Rex. And then the third question, the third question which would be, uh, introduced by me. And then you will have a closing remark. The introduction is one minute and Rex is gonna let us know when you get. When there's thirty seconds left to any of your questions. Uh, each of the two questions that follow the introduction will have two minutes each. And then the closing will have one more minute. Uh. The way that we're gonna do it, I know we have ten candidates for four seats in Bloomfield Hills School District. We're gonna start by, uh, uh, alphabetically. We'll start with Jim Baker and end with Lauren Wilson, uh, for the first intro. And then we'll switch and we'll start with Lauren Wilson all the way to Jim Baker. On question one and question two, we'll go back to Jim and the closing will start with Lauren and we will. Be following the alphabetical order on that. So I'm gonna start with Mr. Baker. Uh, please unmute yourself, introduce yourself and tell us why are you running for Bloomfield Hills School Board?
Good evening and thank you to the Muslim Community Center for sponsoring this forum. It's a great opportunity for your congregation and the community to hear from the candidates for, for school board. Um, as you said, the camp, the school board is a nonpartisan position. Um, with the focus on students and families in mind, educating our kids, uh, through and into the twenty-first century. Um, and I want to be part of that. I want to serve. Uh, I have three kids in the district. I have freshman twins. And a seventh grader at East Hills. Um, I am committed to serving not only the students, but the families of the community by providing leadership. Guidance, truthful and honest discourse, uh, and above all respect. I want to engage families, I want to engage students, I want to give everyone a voice. And that voice will then come through those of us who serve on the school board to guide and lead the district in the future. Um, my background, I'm the youngest of eight. I'm from Northern Michigan. I've been in the district since two thousand thirteen. Um, and ultimately, it's my goal to serve and my time is done.
Thank you. We are at time, appreciate it. So, uh, Lindsay Baker. Uh, can you please unmute and introduce yourself and why you are running? You're on mute, Lindsay. Let me see. Well, you're not, but we can't hear you.
Me now?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Um, I want to first thank the Muslim Unity Center for hosting this forum. Um, I appreciate the, the, the opportunity to, to be with you all tonight. Um, I'm the mother of four children in the district, um, who've been in Bloomfield Hills School since kindergarten. They're now at the high school, middle school. Um, and elementary school levels. Uh, my background, I have a bachelor's degree in economics from Princeton University and a master's and PhD. Um, in economics from the University of Michigan. I work as a professional economist in the automotive industry. Um, and that, uh, requires me to use, uh, my background, um, to do data analysis, forecasting, financial planning. Um, and I'm running for school board because I believe my educational background, uh, my professional experience and my parental involvement. Will all provide, um, a unique and valuable perspective to the board. Um, that we have many challenges ahead and, you know, I put my name on the ballot to. Um, serve the community by providing guidance and oversight. Um, as we manage those challenges that we can come out and, um, emerge stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. And next is, and please forgive me if I. Mispronounce any name and correct me. I'm, I'm happy to try to pronounce your name correctly. Sandeep Chada, is that correct?
Yes, it's some, some deep.
Okay, uh, can you please introduce yourself and tell us why are you running for Bloomfield Hills District?
My name is Sandeep, um, and Shadow. And I want to thank the Unity Center. I live right down the street from, from your, um, premises and. You know, my goals, um, in running for, um, a leadership position in the Board of Education. Is to, um, allow all students to be treated equally in the district and I. I came to this country as an immigrant with my family when I was nine years old. Uh, I went through a lot of discrimination when I was younger, um, and through with having a lot of. Incredible teachers that challenged me in many ways. I was really able to go to the University of Michigan. And then, uh, studied neuroscience at the, at Michigan State University and I taught for several years. Also taught, a student taught in Detroit, which was an incredible experience to. To see some of the challenge, uh, challenges that other districts face. And I know Bloomfield Hills, we also have some issues with diversity and I want to challenge the, the community to do better.
Thank you. Uh, next, Mr. Tarek Fala.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, can you please introduce yourself and tell us why are you running for a seat on the Bloomfield Hills District School Board?
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Thank you to all the Muslims, uh, listening in, tuning in, watching this after maybe everyone else participating. It's such an honor. Um, everything I feel like is coming full circle. My father, who was, uh, you know, immigrant to this country as a Muslim. Pushing the value of education in my life and now me. Um, having the chance to see that come full circle as a Muslim and, you know, earning a spot to be on the Board of Education is remarkable. So. Um, I have two young ki- uh, children in the district, six and eight. Um, I'm very passionate about education. I worked in education for eleven years while I lived in Utah. Uh, passing important bond initiatives, going through the same kind of things we're doing here. Um, giving back to our community, improving our infrastructure, improving our, uh, our ways to interpret assessments and, uh, ways to give back to all students. Um, I know what it takes. I'm very committed. I'm very passionate about this and I want to help all students in our district. Sometimes we're focused on. Um, certain groups and my job as a board, uh, member would be to focus on every single student in our district and find ways to improve. Their academic journey, give back to our community and ultimately make Bloomfield Hills Schools a district where all are proud to be a part of. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Nicholas Hogan. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yeah, that was, that was pretty close. Uh, it's Howgan, Howgan.
Howgan, Howgan.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, can you introduce yourself?
Uh, yeah, my name is Nicholas Howgan. Um, I am a, uh, a teacher in the Southfield School District. Um, I grew up in a small town in, uh, Minnesota, really close to the south to the border. Um, I went to college there, Saint Cloud State, then I took, uh, my first teaching job, full-time job down in Broward County, Florida, where I was. A middle school teacher for eleven years or so. Met my wife, we went to the, lived in the Northeast for a while. Um, we got married, we were expecting, so then we moved back to the Detroit area, which is where her family is from. So I've been in the Bloomfield Hills area now for seven years. Um, while my son was, uh, growing up, um, I was actually a stay-at-home dad for a little while, so I have a. A vast perspective on, uh, on a lot of things that, uh, I don't think many people in, in my cohort generally do. Um, when it comes to, uh, the, the board and why I'm, why I'm running, um, I really want to focus on making sure that our students have. Um, equity and everything that, that, that we offer for them. I want to make sure that our students are, are being trained. For the, the future world that we're in and not the past world, because I feel like a lot of stuff that we do in school is, uh. Can be kind of antiquated. Um, but yeah, I'm Nicholas Howgan and I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Megan Hill is next.
Hi, good evening. My name is Megan Hill. Um, I'm a resident of the West Bloomfield portion of our district. Um, uh, my daughter attends one of the elementary schools in the district. Um, one of the specific reasons that my husband and I chose our home was so that we could be in the Bloomfield Hills District. An attribute, an attribute that we like and love about this district is its diversity. Um, I, I love the diversity that my daughter has been exposed to in her class, the things that she has taught me about her classmates. Um, that I never had that perspective at eight years old, so I admire that. Um, I am an attorney. I was a prosecutor for Oakland County for seven years. Um, since then, I'm in a commercial real estate focused career. Um, I have extensive history with working with school boards in that capacity. Um, I've also, um, done work, uh, as a, um. Public defender for Oakland County for felony indigent defendants. So I history, uh, and track record of. Caring about the community and giving back and the reason I decided to run was, uh, to continue in that, um, spirit and help our community. Done.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, Paul Collin.
Thank you. Hi, uh, Paul Collin. Um, I have two children that graduated, uh, from the district. Uh, I'm currently on the school board. I've been on the school board for the last seven and a half years. Um, why I'm running again for reelection, I, I've done a significant amount. You know, while I've been on the school board, helped pass the two hundred million dollar infrastructure bond, helped hire superintendent, but the most. Most, uh, reason that I'm proud of is what I've done the last seven years supporting our students. Giving them guidance, you know, as, as an example, um, a student group, uh, came to me a couple of years ago looking to have Eid as a holiday. And I helped navigate them through the process, um, and policy. And what ultimately happened, uh, a year later, the right way is now we have Eid and on our calendar. Because of my involvement in helping a student group, um, go through the right process and policy to get that done. And I want to continue that the next four years.
Thank you, Paul. Harris, uh, how do I spell your last name, Harris?
Uh, it's spelled NG.
Uh, how, how do I pronounce it? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, pronunciation is ing. So pretend there's a I in front.
Okay, okay, ink, okay. That can you please introduce yourself?
Yeah, dog, it started, uh, harassing. So, um, I'm actually, uh. A son of Chinese immigrants, uh, you know, my parents moved here to the US, um. With no high school education, uh, I grew up, I was born and grew up in the US, went to kindergarten, couldn't speak any English. I was able to kind of get through public schools, um. First in the family, grew up college, uh, was able to get two engineering degrees from Kettering, uh, MBA from Ross, uh, at Michigan. Uh, because of kind of what public schools have been able to do for me, based on where I started. Uh, public schools are very important, right? And I think that's why I'm running is that I think that. A strong public school gives opportunity to everyone regardless of who you are, where you're from. And I think that's why we need, uh, to strengthen our school system. Uh, professionally, I'm actually, uh, I'm a partner in a global management consulting firm, uh, providing advisory services to, um. Kind of large corporate businesses around the world, around performance improvement, corporate strategy, finance. Um, I also do a lot around community service, uh, president, oh, sorry.
Thank, thank you. Appreciate it.
The fast minute.
Uh, it wa- it is a fast minute. So now we have, uh, someone speaking on behalf of Caroline Noble and, uh, I think that's Melissa.
Okay, um, this is gonna be, uh, my only minute as I don't, not gonna attempt to answer questions for Carolyn, but, um. But I'll, I'll speak to her nature as a friend. I've been friends with Carolyn for nineteen years now. Um, I actually myself grew up in Bloomfield Hills School District, so I'm familiar with, um. Even though I'm in Atlanta now, familiar with, um, all that encompasses and I think Carolyn would make a. Great addition to the school board and she understands that really diversity is, is the strength of this district. As a friend, Carolyn is kind, honest, and she would absolutely be transparent with the community as to what's going on in the schools. She's also determined. When she sets her mind to something, she'll finish and find a solution, whether it was deciding to go to law school. Or making a determination that a career in psychology wasn't for her in her professional life and then deciding to, uh, go to law school. Um, and in her professional life, building relationships and exceeding goals in her career as Director of Development at U of M Dearborn. She really wants to make Bloomfield Hills Schools a place to be not only for her children, but, um, for all children in the next twenty years. Making the system equitable and inclusive to all children.
Melissa, thank you. You're at time.
That minute, that minute really ran quickly. Okay, thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, appreciate it. So we have Lauren Wilson. Is she on? Calling on Lauren?
Hmm, no.
I don't, I don't see Lauren here, so with that being said, we're gonna move to. Rex with the next set of questions and we will start from Harris. Harris Inc.
Well, thank you so much. Uh, so the first question that we have for all the candidates and just as a reminder. Uh, you get two minutes to answer for each question. The first question that we have are, what are some of the lessons that you learned from the pandemic? And what actions will you take to build on these lessons regarding education in the district?
Yeah, I think, um, my personal lessons from the pandemic, one is that, um. The, kind of the, the actions that were taken by the government, i- if you think about kind of all the things that were happening, it was kind of unprecedented. You know, very hard from a leadership standpoint. It was very challenging from our, uh, from our school board. And also from administration, right? Uh, it's very hard to go back and say, you know, what could they have done better or different? I think in hindsight, we're kind of all experts. But looking forward, I think what's important is that there was, there was a lot of learning loss that happened during COVID. Uh, you know, there were a lot of social, emotional, mental health challenges that came up through COVID or because of all the actions that were taken during COVID. And that, and then subsequently, there's been a lot of funding, right, that's been directed to the schools because of the COVID impact. Standing here and looking forward, what we have to do is address the two things that were impacted, right? One is the learning. And then second is the social, emotional, mental health of the students. We have to, uh, learn how to use this money that's been given to us from both federal and state sources. Really use it effectively to address it. And when we say, um, you know, both the learning and the social emotional health. Not everyone was impacted the same. Right? So we can't have kind of large kind of slots of policies and procedures. Uh, and kind of large buckets of money thrown at everyone. What we have to do is understand kind of where everyone's at. Figure out where everyone needs support and, and really effectively use our, our money there. You know, I think that's, uh, what we have to do going forward, uh, based on kind of what we've learned during COVID.
Thank you so much for your answer. Uh, I am going to reiterate the question, uh. With every candidate, uh, just because it can be a little long. Uh, so next is going to be Mr. Paul Collin. Uh, what are some of the lessons that you learned from the pandemic and what actions will you take to build on these lessons?
Thank you. Um, so a lot of lessons were learned. Uh, one of the biggest lessons that I learned during the pandemic is. You know, everyone has a point of view, um, and everyone needs to be empathetic to everyone's point of view. You can't just, I mean, it's very easy to take one particular side and not understand where the other person's coming from. I think, you know, being on the, on the school board, obviously we were inundated with different viewpoints, um, of how to handle the pandemic. And it's easy for everyone to come up with, you know, this is the way it should be handled. But I think what's important is you try to, um, gather in all the information you have from a various amount of sources. And come up with the best plan that you can do and move forward. And then additionally, you know, what you've learned is, um, obviously, you know, just, just like being on the school board or being in any organization. What's important is, obviously, the district, we've, we've made some mistakes on the school board, we've made some mistakes. I've personally made some mistakes over the last, you know, couple of years. What's most important is you learn from those mistakes and if you're, and if you're in a situation again, you make sure you don't make those same mistakes again. I think that's what's most important.
Thank you so much. Uh, next, the question is addressed to Ms. Megan Hill. So what are some of the lessons that you learned from the pandemic and what actions do you plan to take on addressing and on building on some of these lessons?
Um, eh, thank you. In the spirit of, you know, wanting to. Focus on the future and how to build moving forward. I'll, I'll just say this, my takeaway from the. Society's reaction to the pandemic, it was. Borderline scary to me how quickly things can just become politicized and people lose sight of pragmatic decision-making and. Um, that was the most disheartening thing for me to watch was people divide over. Uh, in political ways over a virus that will forever, um, baffle me. So. Part of the reason I'm interested in this is because I think our society, uh, and our community has a lot of healing that we need to do. We need to. Stop focusing on politically driven, um, positions and label other people that way. And just focus on getting our kids back on track. Um, the, the social, emotional and the educational needs that we need to be dedicated to. Um, fully advocating for proper use of resources that we have because of it. And just focus on these kids and make sure that they're just doing okay, that they're doing well on their scores and that they're emotionally stable because. Um, the environment that they've been exposed to from a lot of adults. For the past couple of years has been quite frankly toxic and I think that our community needs some healing, um, and to stop. Uh, interacting with each other in such a political way. Um, so moving forward, that, that's my focus is get these kids back on track and, and move on.
Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Nicholas Howgan. What are some of the lessons that you learned from the pandemic and what actions will you take to build on these lessons on the school board?
All right, so first, um, I think that, um, people learned, uh, generally speaking that. Politics, uh, affects schools a lot and with the virus, everyone saw it. But what people need to realize is that politics have been affecting our schools since as long as I've been a teacher and longer before that. Uh, budgets come from politicians, you know, class sizes that, that comes from politicians. Uh, all the things that make the school, except for the students and the teachers essentially are influenced by politics. So everyone needs to understand that when people say get politics out of schools, it's. People are just not having their eyes open that politics influence. They try and put their head in the sand and pretend that. Voting one way or the other doesn't impact our schools when that's false. It's always impacted it. Number two, um, I teach middle school and we talk a lot with my students about how. When you are doing a research paper, not all sources are equal. Well, it seems that a lot of the, uh, people in our communities also need to understand that when you are talking about being empathic. Empathetic towards worldviews, we need to understand that people need to be drawing their information from the same cohort of trusted facts. Uh, we, we can't just pull stuff out of some, some random spot and say, hey, you should, you know, empathize with my opinion because. You know, my great uncle said this is what's up. So that's not true either. Uh, going forward, I think that we need to teach our kids how to have civil conversations because as we can see, a lot of adults have a hard time. If someone doesn't agree with their viewpoint. And again, it's, it's frustrating because a lot of the stuff that I saw. Our adults act like is stuff that I'm trying to teach my middle schoolers to not do, you know, in middle schoolers. Brains aren't fully developed, so when you talk to them, you kind of have to, you know, let everyone know, hey, we're all kind of, you know, learning as we, as we go through this. And bring it down and just make sure that we have positive intent, whereas, you know. In the real world with the adults, I don't think that there was a lot of positive intent, well, in many situations, I'll say that. Um, I don't see my timer is up, my thing's in the way. There it is. Thank you.
Much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, next, Mr. Tarek Fala. Uh, what are some of the lessons that you learned from the pandemic? And what actions will you take to build upon these lessons?
Yeah, thank you. So I, I think, uh, we haven't stopped learning. I'm still learning every single day. About, um, changes in our environment, our schools and our professional lives, everything. Uh, but a couple of the things would be, you know, focus on listening. I think if COVID taught us anything, it's that there are so many different perspectives to problems we have. There's so many different viewpoints that, you know, you have to really be open, listening, engaging with people in a, in a great way, in an open way. Uh, respecting everybody's viewpoints. And then most importantly is from a district level, really engaging with the community constantly. Sharing information, sharing data, uh, making sure that if we do want to make a decision, we get that information out in front of the community well ahead of when that decision has to be made. We solicit feedback. Um, not everybody's going to agree. It's important to understand that we're not trying to get a hundred percent agreement, but we're trying to get. Uh, the best decision for our kids. And ultimately, that really, that leads to another lesson learned, which is we have to make a decision sometimes. Uh, there were moments during COVID where I think indecision really caught us off guard. Not making a decision probably could have, uh, ultimately done more detriment than actually making the wrong decision because the wrong decision allows you to learn. React quickly, uh, and make the right decision even faster. Uh, beyond that, I would, I would look towards budgeting. Um, we had some, some missteps there and not to cast blame, this is not about, uh, casting blame on the district, but. Paying attention to the things that we maybe just didn't have a good insight into. For example, substitute teachers coming back after COVID. Knowing that we were going to have some gaps there, uh, as teachers were out and needing to have those subs, we missed out on the budget. Um, and that's impacting reserves at this point. So, um, there are some items there, being open to other options. I think we did a tremendous job with our virtual school compared to most other places in the state of Michigan. We had a tremendous reaction to that. And so we need to keep being innovative and exploring other options for our students, not necessarily virtual learning, but different ways to offer differentiated learning. Uh, and continue to push that ball forward to challenge those learners in different ways. Um, and I think that would be it.
Great. Thank you so much for your answer. Uh, next, Mr. Sandeep Chada. What, uh, uh, I'm sorry. What are some of the lessons that you learned from the pandemic and what actions do you plan on taking to build upon these lessons?
Thank you. Just to finish on my, um, intro a little bit, I, I've been in this area for more than thirty years and I have a son that graduated, um. Uh, from, from BHHS and I have a freshman at BHHS and both of my kids were adversely affected by the COVID pandemic. And I think there are many, uh, individuals that, um. Just were adversely affected and, and the social, emotional, especially teenagers, I think. Uh, so one thing going forward, we need to more, invest more in mental health, counseling, uh, social, emotional learning. And also for the next couple of years, which will affect this board coming up is to, um, make sure the. We don't, we don't lose, uh. make sure the we don't we don't lose uh those children that were fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years old at the time. Um, one, I'm a scientist by training and and we we need to believe in science. And we're at the school board individually cannot make decisions like this. They have to rely on the county health department. Um, I'm also the dean owner of a preschool and I'm the one that was responsible for covid policies at our school. We we were closed for two months. We stayed open for the rest of the time. We did health screenings. We recommended vaccinations for adults when they're available. And I think following science is the best way. And I agree with Megan in what she said, her remarks about the politicization of of this crisis um was inexcusable. I think it resulted in on undo harm to many people. Um, so going forward, I want to make sure that the school board follows scientific principles in everything that we do. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for your answer. Next, uh, Miss Lindsay Baker. What are some of the lessons that you learned from the pandemic and what actions will you take to build upon these lessons?
I think the biggest lesson that I learned um was just how vitally important in-person learning um really is. I think, you know, we've never experienced a time when we lost that. Um, and so, you know, going through that experience, I think opened a lot of people's eyes to just how just how much the schools do, how much they provide for our students, our families, um, just how much um, just how important they are to to our community. Um, and then also seeing, um, you know, firsthand from home, you know, what the kids kids were learning and what the teachers were going through, you know, appreciating um the teachers so much throughout this um and and just how much was put on them um throughout the pandemic, both during, you know, to 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 have to pivot and learn a whole new way of delivering um classroom instruction virtually to then coming back in an environment that switched back and forth, flip flopped back and forth between hybrid, virtual, full in person. Um, and then, you know, now that we're back just dealing with all the um, you know, the impact of of that um from from, you know, for the students. Um, so just, you know, coming out of that, I think, you know, what I want to focus on is um trying to help one, the teachers, so everything's not falling um on their plate. They're not asked to do everything for for everyone. Um, and then on the student side of it, you know, really figuring out, you know, everybody experienced the pandemic differently. Um, you know, the impacts hit some students more academically, some students more from um a social emotional standpoint. Um, so I think we need to look at each student individually and and try to target, um, you know, the help to them, you know, in terms of what they need and the support that they need. Um, and I think people have mentioned the funding that the district has received. And I think, um, you know, we need to to focus that um in the best way we can. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And lastly, Mister Jim Baker. What are some of the lessons that you learned from the pandemic and what actions will you take to build on these lessons?
Thank you very much. The three key lessons I've learned during the pandemic are strength, empathy and resilience. Strength in terms of the strength of the family. We were forced, all of us were forced to uh be together twenty-four hours a day in one place. Um, and we made it through and and our families grew in love and support for each other. I empathy, we as a human species, um we've lived together through this pandemic. So we're be able, we're able to empathize with each other, with the plight of our children, with the plight of ourselves as adults, not being able to report to work, not being able to go to the grocery store, maybe going to the grocery store masked up, clothed up in protective gear, whatnot, and then resilience. Um, the human species is amazing at the ability to adapt. And our children adapted so well through this, but we did suffer losses. And looking forward, we need to focus on the losses that our kids suffered, both academically and from a mental health perspective. Um, we cannot treat the time spent during the pandemic as a lost year or a lost eighteen months. We need to be able to identify the needs of those children and those students and those families who need the academic help and provide that those services, as well as those who were impacted from a mental health perspective and identify those and provide those services as well. We need to listen to the experts. We hear, listen to science. I agree. We need to involve the experts in our district to teach us on how to address and deal with this pandemic because it's not going away and we will have pandemics going forward. I want to make sure that we use our money wisely in terms of making the facilities clean and safe for our children and promote our children and our families to, listen, if you're sick, it's okay to stay home. Don't ostracize. Don't treat somebody worse off because they can't show up one day because they're not feeling well. And ultimately, I just want to make sure that we learn and adapt together. Um, may we are a community in this district. We are not separate. We are equal and we need to make sure that we support each other, hold each other up, and we promote that strength and resilience. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, I'm going to pass it over to Doctor Dima for the next uh set of questions.
Okay. Thank you, Rex, um, and Doctor Harris. Um, we're gonna start with this question too, and we're gonna start with Mister Baker. Uh, you have two minutes to answer the question. Do you endorse inclusion in the curriculum? And what would you do to make sure that material used to support the curriculum correctly represent minorities and does not marginalize any minority?
Well, thank you for that opportunity. We, this question's come up in other forums. And one of the things that I've always spoke of is, and we've all spoke of, the state mandates a curriculum down to us. And we, as a district, we um worked to implement the state's directives through uh our teachers and our administrators and the superintendent. Um, one of the issues that I've addressed is point blank, we don't teach critical race theory in this district. We don't teach critical race theory in in the state. Uh, but we do teach history and we teach, we have to teach an unvarnished version of history. We can't sanitize the truth. And history is based on truth. It's based on fact. It happened. We can't identify it in some I mealy mouthed comfortable way because our history, the history of the human species is one rife with struggles with with war, with with any number of problems, but what we see is we see growth. And what we're seeing now in the in the twenty-first century, especially in our kids, our kids are coming together. Um, our kids are demonstrating such levels of of diversity and inclusion. And I'm so proud to listen to my children. Um, I'm so proud to hear them tell me what they're learning. We need to be able to teach our children the truth. And that's ultimately the goal here. But in the same sense, when we're conveying the, we talked about the the division of the community, we have to be able to engage each other and and respectful discourse and say to each other what we're feeling, but also listen to each other as well. We need to be able to tell our families what our kids are learning and that it's not bad. It's not um, it's not wrong. It is the truth. It is what happened. And ultimately, that's how I want to bring communities together. And I want to give our kids more leadership opportunities to show inclusion to us.
Thank you. Thank you. It's time. Um, Doctor Lindsay Baker. Same question. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Yeah, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Sure. Do you endorse inclusion in the curriculum? And what would you do to make sure that material used to support the curriculum correctly represents minorities and does not marginalize any minority?
Um, so I think as Mister Baker alluded to, the curriculum does come from the state, but it's on the district in terms of how we implement that curriculum, what materials we use um to support and teach um that curriculum. And I think it's important that we set um expectations for the superintendent on down that our curriculum does include everyone in our community. We have a community that's um amazingly diverse, and I think that's one of the strong points. Um, you know, and one of the reasons that I support public education and I want my kids to be in public education is they get exposed to um diverse viewpoints. And I think that's an important part of their learning, so I absolutely would support um, that being part of the materials we use in the in the curriculum. Um, I know that we have processes in place to review materials um in terms of that the materials being inclusive um and representing um marginalized um populations. And I think that um it's sometimes those processes break down. So I think it's important that um we engage the community, that we listen to parents, that um you know, we try to get that feedback and encourage feedback from the community so that we can recognize if there is a problem, if if a material made it through the process. Um, but maybe, you know, we we missed some impact that it had um on on a particular community that we take that feedback um and are willing to relook and reevaluate um curriculum, you know, um, as as that as that comes up. So I think, you know, transparency with the community um is incredibly important so that we can get that feedback and make sure that the um curriculum fairly represents everyone in the community.
Thank you. Um, uh, Mister uh Sandeep, s- same question?
Yeah, I think inclusion um has a lot to do with the diversity in staff. Um, you know, my, like I said, my older child was in the district for twelve years and I don't recall um a lot of diversity. Um, you you know, the the diversity of the staff should reflect um, the the diversity in the student body. So if um that way, different viewpoints are um addressed while teaching the curriculum that like we all said is mandated by the state. But how we deliver that material depends on the person, the teacher that's at the head of the class. And having different viewpoints allows all of the students to be included in any conversations that are being held. Um, and also, I think that um we should have outside resources such as the Unity Center and also the the Barthi Temple, which I belong to, has outreach programs um for helping uh students to learn more about different uh parts of the community that they belong to. And we we should also be focused on meeting with other uh districts in the area. Uh, Pontiac is right next door. Uh, we can have outreach from students and staff and administrators into uh into those districts to bring more viewpoints in to the classroom.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, Mister Fala, Tarek?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, inclusion is extremely important in the curriculum. Um, as everybody said, the curriculum in terms of, you know, what it is, is mandated by the state, but that's really the second most important. The most important is the how. How we teach the curriculum is more important because what resonates with a student is is what's going to ultimately help or hinder their their academic journey. Um, I remember as a student, as, you know, uh, Arab-American Muslim growing up and not knowing that, uh, you know, the community I belong to had so many contributions to our world. Um, algebra, kerosene lamps, things like that, which came from the Muslim world. Growing up, I never knew that, even as an Arab Muslim, I never knew because it wasn't shown in the curriculum. Um, so how do we do that? Well, it's important, as others have said, we reach out to every community. We have experts, we have a DEI coordinator uh at our at our school district, but we need those diverse perspectives. Um, students need to see people that look like the history they're learning about. They need to see uh that reflected in the people that are talking about it. So whether it's bringing in, um, you know, people from the Unity Center, people from other groups like that, or just bringing in, you know, professionals, bringing in someone that looks like them to talk about the things that they're contributing to. Uh, that's incredibly powerful. Uh, we need to work on engaging with our community more. We have such a diverse community here, um, so many different religions, so many different cultures represented that we have to take advantage of that. We can't always just look to the textbooks and and, you know, explore. Once we get in the classroom, we've got to look at extracurricular activities. The multicultural celebration that we did is phenomenal. I attended that and I've been attending and I think it gives everybody such a great perspective. I learned so much, um, even things about the Arab world that I didn't know that were, you know, great. So I think we need to keep focusing on that. Um, the curriculum is important and we got to supplement that with uh extra activities. But students need to see people who look like the history they're they're talking about. We need to review the curriculum frequently with those groups and making sure that it's delivering on the on the diverse community that we have here in Bloomfield Hills.
Thank you, Time. Uh, Mister Nicholas Hogan? Hogan.
Uh, um, all right, so to start out, diversity, equity, inclusion, obviously, as everyone said, is really, really important. And it is not baked into our curriculum per se, but I would say that any great school, diversity, uh, equity, inclusion is is the foundation upon which it's built, right? Because you can't run a school, a great school, without having the undercurrents of those philosophies. I mean, it's it's all over in schools. So now that ties into some of the resources that our students have available to them. And I said this in one of our meetings before, but we don't have many history texts or history supplemental texts that come from minority viewpoints. And I think that's a really, really important thing because I know one of the most kind of enlightening things I experienced in college was when my professors had me read texts from minorities, groups that that obviously aren't like me. Because generally speaking, the people that win the wars, the people that are the conquerors, they're the ones that get to write the history books, which, you know, throughout their history, most of the time looked like me from what our schools look like. But that's not the whole story. We need to get the perspective from everybody that was, you know, in those situations because that's how you become enlightened. That's how you become a well-rounded, you know, knowledgeable person about all facts that were part of the situation. Um. Is that my timer? Sorry, my my computer is really small. I can't see my screen is, I can't see everything. Sorry. Uh, but yeah, I mean, diversity, equity, inclusion is uh is so important. And I don't think that anyone really gives it as much credit as as we should or thinks of as much as we should, as much as everyone talks about now, we should be talking about more. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Megan, Megan Hill?
Thank you. So um, I'm a, I'm very much a process-oriented person. And so, to my knowledge, there is a uh committee that exists within our district right now that helps make decisions about how our state mandated curriculum is carried out in our district. So um, I have a keen interest in that, learning more about that, how it works. I think there needs to be um transparency regarding um who is on that committee, uh, how rotations on that committee work, how they make decisions regarding curriculum. And obviously, a a key component for who makes up that committee would be a diverse committee, bringing diverse viewpoints. Um, and I'd like as a school board member um to have less of a direct say in some of those things and more of a direct say in making sure that process is being um created in an equitable way and adhered to um, all the way through. So um, that's my perspective. And then, you know, just a note on what I think our district is already doing well in this regard is um, every grade that my daughter's been in, starting when she was a, you know, two-year-old in Bloom and Preschools, she was exposed to um some sort of um cultural diversity exercise where kids in the class presented uh key points about their culture. And I think that that's really cool when you, it's not just coming out of a book, when you can hear from a classmate about how they celebrate um various holidays. So I like that the district has done that and I'd like to see that continue.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Colin, Paul?
Yes, um, so, you know, as as said earlier, and in being on the school board, the curriculum is obviously mandated by the state. Um, but how we, you know, how we teach the curriculum, you know, is is something that the district has control over. And I think it's important uh that, you know, again, we do have policies, we do have uh structures in place in in determining, you know, how we're going to teach that curriculum. Um, so, um, like I think some people have said, you know, we we do have um a policy and we do have committee structures in place where we can do a better job is getting feedback. I don't think we've done enough, uh, especially while I've been on the board and getting feedback, whether it's student feedback, community feedback on how we're doing. I think it's important that all students, uh, when they're um, you know, in the classroom feel safe, they feel included. And I think we need to um get that feedback. Um, you know, I I'm very big on student voice, you know, I helped start uh not only our Student Equity Council, I helped start, you know, our Student Intern Program. Um, but I'm very, very big on, you know, on getting the feedback to make sure that, you know, the curriculum, you know, is hitting the mark with making all students feel safe, you know, in terms of, you know, what they're learning. So um, we do have a process in place, but we can do a better job as a district in trying to solicit feedback on where we're not hitting the mark in that area, you know, of inclusive curriculum.
Thank you. Um, and Mister Harris, Inc?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so as a minority
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so as a minority myself, right, I'm completely supportive of making sure that everyone is respected and recognized in the school. Right, our schools shouldn't really be marginalizing any groups or their minorities and majorities. And it's really the job of the board, really from a governance standpoint, to make sure that's not happening. So as a as a board member, right, that's, I would be making sure that happens. We also have to figure out that how do we take on these types of topics without being divisive? Right, how do we understand, you know, each other and kind of put this together so that this is a positive experience for for staff, for our children, for the families? And and really, understanding of the groups is the different groups is really about education. You know, I think understanding different cultures, different languages, different customs. You know, I think we have to all realize that we're all humans, we're all humans from different backgrounds. And you know, what makes us all common is that we all are human, we're all people on this earth that we have to learn how to live together. And I think we should, as a school, make sure that we educate everyone on these different customs and and our backgrounds and languages. And I think that's a big part of it is, once I think people are comfortable with understanding differences, I think then we start respecting each other much more. So I'm completely supportive of ensuring that everyone feels at home at school every day. They bring the best of themselves to school every day so that they can achieve kind of what they want in terms of education every day.
Thank you, Mister Inc. And we're gonna switch to now closing remarks. Each candidate has one minute. So we're gonna go back to, we're gonna start again with Mister Inc.
Oh, thank you. I start twice, no, but that's okay. So closing remarks, I think priority wise for myself, if I'm elected as board members, first is really around education, making education first in the schools. And when I say educate, education first, it means academic rigor. You know, how do we improve the performance of our of our academics? That's really around progress and potential. How do we make sure every student progresses every year that they're in school? How do we make sure every student operates at the potential they can operate at? The second piece is really around safety. You know, how do we make sure that every child feels safe every day? Every child, every staff member should return home safe every day as well. We need to make sure that we have policies, procedures. And and the staff is really around around safety. And the third piece is really around financial management. Last year, in a year where we had record funding, we ran a three million dollar deficit. Right, so we really need to understand the financials and and manage it better so that we're spending more on instruction and being efficient with the money that we're getting from the state. So I'm committed to make sure, making sure that our district is strong. I have the qualifications and it's important for qualifications. We have a big district. Hundred million dollar budget, thousand employees, five thousand students. This is the topic, thank you.
And and thank you, appreciate your, appreciate you joining us today. Paul Colin, a closing remarks, please.
Thank you. I've been on the board seven and a half years and and I'm very, very proud of all my accomplishments that I've had. Now, I helped pass a two hundred million dollar infrastructure bond. I helped hire a new superintendent, one of the most transparent processes we've we've had. And I've been a big advocate of our students, you know, I started a whole social network campaign just basically supporting our students for the last, you know, seven and a half plus years. I, you know, and the reason why I'm running again is I've made a significant impact in community members in students, in our educators. All of them have indicated to me how much of an impact that I've made. And I'd like to do it for another four years, continue to make an impact. It means a lot to me, means a lot to our community, means a lot to our students, means a lot to our educators. So I have the experience. I've learned a lot over the last seven years. I've learned a lot. That's going to help me be a better board member in in terms of the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Colin. And now we're gonna go to Ms. Hill.
Thank you. I think the biggest takeaway I want the community to know about me. And not speaking, you know, about professional experience from a practical standpoint, but from you know, I prosecuted people that professional experience has molded me quite a bit. And I've also defended criminal defendants. And I'd say that that, seeing both sides of that and meeting a lot of people from a lot of different walks of life at their worst really give you a unique perspective on the world and the world's not black and white. And a lot of people deserve empathy and I just, that perspective that I would bring to the board, I think is is the most critical piece is that I I'm a big proponent of trying to help the underdog and and see them through. And I think Bloomfield Hills Schools is a great environment. And that we just need to continue to have the right people in place to make it better.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mister Haugen, closing remarks.
Once again, thanks for having us all here. This is, it's always great when everyone gets together and gets to share what they're about. To start off with, you know, I've been, public schools in some capacity for forty-three years, which is crazy. You know, teaching, being in school, being head start, taking advantage of every possible advantage that you can get growing up with the public schools. If it wasn't for public schools and if it wasn't for Pell Grants, if it wasn't for state colleges, there's no way I would be here. I mean, I'm just a very, very passionate about making sure everybody else gets the same opportunities that I had growing up. Because once again, it it is, it's really, really easy to succeed in this life if you're starting on third base. All right, I want to make sure that all of our students get the the same sort of opportunities, no matter what base they're starting on. That's really, really important to me. I think that we need to make sure that we are teaching our students to have civil conversations. They need to learn the quote unquote soft skills, because in today's world, soft skills are going to be more important than ever. I think we need to emphasize that in in high school. I think we need to give our students. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much, Mister Fela.
Thank you once again to the Muslim Unity Center and Engage, fantastic, getting all these perspectives. I want to close with the fact that you know, I'm a candidate that's putting in the work already. You know, I know everybody's been busy in this election and it takes incredible amount of work, but I'm going the extra mile. Some people are talking about testing scores and funding and things like that. And it's one thing to talk about a single number and it's a lot harder to do the work to understand what those numbers mean, to go deeper to understand why they exist, and that's what I'm doing already. I'm going deeper to understand more than just what, you know, college readiness or a single test means and understand why those gaps might exist and what we can do to solve those problems. I'm going deeper to look more than just a deficit and talk about what contributed to that, because there's COVID spending, there's substitutes, there's all kinds of things that go into that. I'm going deeper now and as a board member, I will commit to going as far as it takes to make sure I'm serving all interests in our community. So I appreciate this opportunity and I'm very much looking forward to serving everyone as a trustee on November eighth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Chada.
Thank you. You know, I I feel my experiences have given me and will give me a chance to lead this district in a in a fashion that we deserve. And one thing, I'm I'm a uniter. I like to bring communities together and one thing I'm saddened to see is that people are pitting the candidates on this board, different sides. We all want the best for the district and it's 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 unfortunate that some people see us differently and they're labeling people and, you know, they've, some people took my signs and things like that. My belief is that teachers are the ones that allow students to have good outcomes. That was the true in my case and also my children. And we need to support teachers and make sure they're, it's not all about pay, it's about respect and valuing teachers. And I really would like to do that as a school board member. Thank you.
Thank you. Doctor Lindsay Baker.
Thank you again to the Muslim Unity Center for this opportunity. I appreciate the chance to share more about myself with with your community. I'm, you know, I I would love the opportunity to use my professional educational background to serve the community. I've done that so far as a parent in the district. You know, helping the district set up the COVID dashboard during during that time helped, you know, as a volunteer in the schools and and I would love the opportunity to serve at a leadership table as at at with a seat on the board. I think, you know, my background coupled with my you know, line of sight to kind of all levels of the district with kids in high school, middle school and elementary school, you know, I see what's going on you know, across across the board. And I think that would be a valuable perspective to add to the board. So I appreciate your vote on November eighth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Baker. Closing remarks.
Thank you. Thank you again to the Muslim Community Center or Unity Center for this forum and this opportunity. I firmly believe in the tradition of servant leadership. Whether it's leading my family through daily service or leading my clients through serving them in discrimination and retaliation lawsuits as a trial attorney, I am committed to providing compassionate, dedicated and honest service to the students and families of this district. And in that, I want to serve your families. I want to serve your students. I want to see this district excel. And a vote for Jim Baker on November eighth would go a long way to make that happen. And I would appreciate your vote on November eighth. Thank you.
Thank you. So I would like to conclude the Bloomfield Hills District Candidate Form by thanking all the candidates who took the time and presented today. We wish you all the best on November eighth and we look forward to hearing more more improvements within the districts with, and good luck to all winners. And you are all winners in our book because you are taking, you know, you're taking the public servant challenge and you are running for office. So thank you to all of you. And now I would like to switch to West Bloomfield. Do we have, Rex, do we have everyone in West Bloomfield?
I don't believe we have everyone just yet, but everyone is joining. If I could ask the candidates from the Bloomfield Hills forum to either move to the attendee side if they wish to continue listening in or exit the room, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have, we have almost everyone, yeah.
Okay, so in respect of time, I know it's seven thirty to eight for West Bloomfield. I would like to welcome everyone to with the Muslim Unity Center Candidate Form, West Bloomfield School Board Candidates. Assalamu alaikum, peace be upon you. My name is Doctor Dima Al Gemal. I am a volunteer with the Civic Engagement Committee at the Muslim Unity Center. And in my professional life, I'm the Capital Improvement Planning at Great Lakes Water Authority. We're here today to listen from you. And on behalf of the committee, I would like to welcome you to our, to the primary elections, meet the candidate. I would like you to understand a couple of things. Our goal of this event is to give, is to give our congregation a chance to participate in civic society at in within Oakland County and Michigan. As Muslims, our religion teaches us to be involved in our local community and to be engaged. In other words, we have a duty to be civic, you know, civically engaged within our processes. That is the purpose of this event. We want to provide a platform for our community to engage with the candidates and listen to them. This event is not an endorsement of any candidate. And we are simply providing, again, a platform for people to speak at. I know in the, in the spirit of time, I want to thank the committee and I want to also thank Engage staff who have assisted in preparing this event and planning for it. And I'm going to turn it over to Rex, who is one of the Engage representatives to introduce himself and then take us through the first, through the introductions.
Thank you so much, Doctor Dima. Just in the interest of time, my name is Rex Nazarko. I am the Policy and Organizing Associate for Engage Michigan. We'd like to thank you all for taking your time to be with us and with our community today. These are very valuable conversations that we need to have in order to get people civically engaged. In order to understand our our local government better and in order to get more involved in the the decision-making process. So I'm going to get started right away with just introductions for all candidates, giving you a chance to speak a little bit about yourself and why you're running. You will have one minute and for introductions, two minutes to answer questions and then one minute for concluding remarks. I will begin with Ms. Ashley Davis. Could you please introduce yourself and tell us a little bit briefly about why you're running?
Yeah, hi, I'm Ashley Davis. I'm a lifelong resident of West Bloomfield. I attended West Bloomfield Schools kindergarten through twelfth grade. I graduated from West Bloomfield High School and went on to Michigan State University and earned a bachelor's in biology and secondary education along with a master's in teaching and curriculum. I taught in Royal Public Schools for over ten years and I currently have four children enrolled in West Bloomfield Schools. I'm highly involved with the schools volunteering on a regular basis. I've been a PTO board member for four years. I've attended school board meetings and study sessions for years before my children were even enrolled in the schools. I've participated in district committees and been highly involved in district improvement along with many other committees. So while our school district already does so many things well, there's always room for improvement. And I would really like to help work on that improvement. And I think with my education background, my experience and understanding of the complexities in education and my lifelong history in this community, I think I would be an asset to the board.
Thank you so much. We look forward to hearing from you. Mister Brian Doon. If you could introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about why you're running.
Thank you. My name is Brian Dunn. I'm a parent of two young students in the district. I've been a practicing attorney for the last fourteen years. I'm a small business owner. I've been on my HOA's Board of Directors for the last four years. And I worked in classrooms in the Taylor and South Redford School Districts for about two years prior to starting my legal career. I want to join the Board of Education to improve our academics. Our math and reading proficiencies are currently lower than the countywide score. Our proficiency is below average. One of my main focuses is improving core academic proficiencies, like reading, math and writing. I also want to improve curriculum transparency to parents and involve them more in our academics. I expect to be in the district for the next twelve years. I hope for everyone's support. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mister Dunn. And I I apologize for mispronouncing your last name.
No worries, you're not the first.
I apologize for any mispronunciations going forward from this point on as well. Next, Mister W M Art Holdsworth. If you could introduce yourself and why you're running.
Sure thing. I have a B A, a bachelor's degree in engineering from Oakland University, an MBA from Michigan State. And while I was working during my career, I also earned a certification in public finance. The reason I chose to run for the board is I retired from Oakland County about a year ago. And I want to do something and, you know, get involved in the community in some way. I have a daughter who's in college right now. She went through the West Bloomfield School District K through twelve. And I have another daughter who just started the high school this year. And like most parents, you know, we're worried about our parent, our children's security and safety and mental well-being when they're at school. And one of the things that I was responsible for at Oakland County was a twenty-four million dollar security enhancement project. I want to make sure that our schools are safe. And I want to make sure that our academic performance of the students continues to increase. We have slipped some in the last few years primarily because of COVID. We have to make sure that we get the learning lag from COVID nipping the bud here as soon as soon as possible. And I'm sure we'll talk more later.
Thank you so much, Mister Holdsworth. Next, Ernestina Moore, Ms. Ernestina Moore. If you could introduce yourself and a little bit about why you're running.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Ernestina Moore. I'm a magna cum laude graduate of Howard University with a Bachelor in Business Administration and a law graduate of Washington University School of Law. As a twenty-plus-year labor and employment attorney, I've gained experience working with large and small school districts, giving them advice and counsel during their respective school board meetings, having a working knowledge of the Open Meetings Act, FERPA, collective bargaining agreement and union negotiations. I think that as a very passionate I think that as a very passionate, driven, focused, and dedicated individual, I will be able to make an immediate impact in the board. Given my professional experience, I have the ability to manage multiple parties' interests. And finding a, a solution under even the most challenging of circumstances. All very good skill sets that I think are vital to being an excellent board member. I thank you for your time again this evening. I ask that on November eighth or before that you go to the middle of your ballot. And vote Ernestina Moore because with that vote, you get more action, someone that's not afraid to advocate on behalf of our parents, community, and the district as a whole. That's not afraid to push the district past our status quo and to focus on my platform that consists of curriculum, district enrollment, social emotional learning, and school safety. Again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. Next, Mr. Chris Tucker, if you could introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about why you're running.
Hi, my name is Chris Tucker. Thank you Muslim Unity Center and everyone watching online. I appreciate the opportunity. I attended Wayne State University and Baker College, graduated magna cum laude with a degree in information technology and security. I have six children in district raging from ages eight to sixteen. That's one in the elementary school, two in the middle school, and three in the high school. I am running because our students need to be well-prepared for their future and a future that should excite them in learning. Our staff needs more respect, more pay, and more power in the decision-making on what's going on. And we work for the community, the teachers, the parents, and most of all the students in the district. I hope to earn your vote on November eighth, and I look forward to any further questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Appreciate it. Look forward to hearing from you. Next, Ms. Sheriann Winter.
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 Like the season.
Please tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yes, thank you. First and foremost, my name is Sheriann Winter, and I'm running for the West Bloomfield School Board. I have lived in West Bloomfield for fifteen years. I have two students, one at Dougherty and one at West Bloomfield Middle School. I've been active in the PTOs as my students have gone through the, the school district between Dougherty, Chico, and now West Bloomfield Middle School. I have a Bachelor's Degree in Child Psychology. I have a Master's Degree in Health Psychology. I'm the co-founder and co-chair of the West Bloomfield Parks and Recreation Diversity Task Force. And my platform is diversity, equity, and inclusion. The reason why I'm running for school board is because I see some opportunities and room for improvement when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion in our district. I'm super, super passionate about putting our children first, making sure that their wellbeing and they have all the resources they need. To succeed and thrive, to be productive citizens. And I would hope to get your vote on November eighth for school board for West Bloomfield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Winter. Next, Mr. Kenneth Ferguson. If you could introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about why you're running.
Is Kenneth on?
I don't believe.
I don't see. Okay. So. Thank you, Rex. We'll, we'll go to question number one. Question number one is going to be, we're going to start with Ms. Winter. And, and you'll get two minutes for each question. The first question is, what do you plan on doing further to improve school safety and protect the school community against gun violence?
That's a great question. I think the first thing I would tackle is the school bully policy. I think we need a more preactive and a more inclusive way on how we handle conflict amongst our students. In addition to that, I think it's just very important that our children acknowledge opportunities where their safety requires attention. And that we're properly training our staff and our students to be careful and be vigilant and to ensure that all parties are safe. But when you look across, unfortunately, the prior school shootings, you'll notice a trend in the aggressors. And that they felt they were not included, or they felt that they could not engage with other students, and so they resorted to violence. So I really, really strongly believe that our anti-bully policy needs to be revamped. And we need more resources and training around it to prevent any of those opportunities from happening ever again.
Thank you. Appreciate the answer. We're going to move now to Mr. Tucker. Would you like me to repeat the question?
I would appreciate that, yes.
What do you plan on doing to further improve school safety and protect the school community against gun violence?
First and foremost, I think our district is actually doing very well. At the end of last year, they had a training for all staff members. That included trainers from the FBI and former Secret Service. And they actually used West Bloomfield as a model to other districts about what we're doing right. Obviously, there's always room for improvement, but I believe they're doing a fantastic job. Obviously, gun violence is a very serious subject and a very serious problem plaguing. And it doesn't just happen there. And everyone always thinks, oh, it won't happen to us. But it is something that we have to pay attention to, be vigilant, and see where we can improve. And take the advice given to us by the instructors that do our trainings to improve in any way that they see necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker, for that answer. I'm going to go now to Ms. Moore. What do you plan on doing to further improve school safety and protect the school community against gun violence?
Yes, as I indicated earlier, school safety is a part of my platform. What I've done in that space, I've met extensively with the West Bloomfield Police Chief to discuss this very issue. In addition to that, I'm aware that the school has already done an excellent job in this space, especially with the new middle school. They have lockdown procedures there and also the same scenario at the high school. I think it's very important to make sure that we're continuing our efforts in that space by continuing to partner. With surveillance experts and security firms to ensure that there are no missed opportunities or windows of opportunity that we can take advantage of. There's also the area of shoring up any policies to ensure that they're consistent in that space as well. The middle school has also taken steps and they have onsite mental health specialists there. Because a lot of times, as one of the candidates referenced, that sometimes it comes from a result of not feeling inclusive or not knowing how to handle your emotions. Which is again, another part of my platform from a social emotional learning vantage point. To give children the opportunity and the space to know and learn how to manage their respective emotions. So again, some of the things that we're doing well, but definitely want to continue those efforts and continue to make sure. That we are putting our children's safety first because as an active district parent, I want to know that when my child is getting dropped off. And I'm putting them in the safety of the district that they are in fact safe, as I'm sure any other parent would want to do as well. So again, I think this is very important in light of the recent school shootings and the gun violence that has resulted from the mass shootings. That this is something that we definitely as a district want to maintain that we're staying on the post, pulse and at the forefront of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you for that answer. And now I move to Mr. Art Holdsworth. And the question is again, what do you plan on doing to further improve school safety and protect the school community against gun violence?
Thank you. So during my fifteen years with Plant-Ran as a consultant, and then my eighteen years at Oakland County as the Facilities Management Director. I was in charge of all the county's buildings, around forty of them, about two million, two million square feet of floor space. And that included building safety. So we had a twenty-four million dollar building security enhancement project that I was in charge of while I was there. And there's two aspects to security and gun safety. There's the building hardening. So things like school guard glass, camera surveillance inside and outside the buildings. Centralized control of, of door locks, all, you know, those sorts of things. But those are physical protections which are very important. We need to work with the police departments and security experts to make sure we're doing everything in that area that we can. And making that a priority budget-wise through the district. But the proactive steps are even more important. And Sheri and Tina touched on these. Mental health, right? Nearly every shooter, if not all of them, that, that was involved in a school shooting had some sort of mental health issue. None of them got the help they needed in time. We need to do a better job of identifying mental health issues with all of our students that, that might have them. Have the proper staffing levels in terms of counselors and psychiatrists in the buildings. We need to have proactive threat assessment, early identifier programs, things like that. So that we're being proactive and preventing problems rather than dealing with problems after the fact with a hardened builder.
Thank you for that answer. Appreciate it. Now I move to Mr. Dunn. And the question is again, what do you plan on doing to further improve school safety and protect the school community against gun violence?
Thank you. When I look at this question, I see it as two different parts. There's the external threats and then the internal threats. When we look at external threats, we're, right now, our school district has locked door policy. They have working relationships with the police. So if there is somebody who's coming in to threaten our children from the outside, i- it seems that the school district is doing a very good job with this. I think they're doing a pretty good job inside the schools as well. But one of the main focuses I would like to do, and this ties into academics as well. Number one, reducing classroom sizes. So teachers are more familiar with their students. They can see behavioral patterns. They can alert counselors or administrators if there are changes that they feel threatened. Or if other students are being threatened. I'd also like to bring in more families, get more volunteers in the schools. We do have volunteer programs right now. I, I don't know that they're as, I, I guess. As promoted as I would like them to be. I'd like to have more student, more parents in, more families. There's programs like watchdogs where we have dads just come around, the dads of great students is what the dog stands for. They come around basically making positive comments to students, trying to build up the, the positivity in the school buildings. I, I'd like to see something like that. Before we even delve into, to mental health, I'd, I'd like to try and do as much as we can. And we do need that, the mental health side, of course. But I'd like to build as much of a positive atmosphere in the community as possible.
Thank you for that answer. And I'm, I'm moving over to Ms. Davis. And this question is still, what do you plan on doing to further improve school safety and protect the school community against gun violence?
Okay, so kind of similar to what some of the others have said so far. I think first and most important is our school district has done a really good job with this. I would like to continue working with the law enforcement and consultants that go through our schools and have given some suggestions on what changes we need to make. Such as they, they completely changed the entrances to all of our schools, making sure that nobody can go straight into the building, do go into a corridor first. So following any of those suggestions, I think we need to make sure we provide the budget to do so. But again, that only stops the outside threats. So addressing our inside threats, which tend to be. Sadly, happens more often, I think. We need to make sure that we have the budget to have more staff. You know, I think we have a lot of programming, programming in our schools. We do a lot of social emotional learning. But I think we need more people. We have a lot of programs, but we need more people. And that might be more teachers to have lower class sizes. We need more counselors, more mental health specialists, more social workers. We need more hands-on people with our kids. So I think that's really important and something we need to make a priority. We need to make sure that our kids feel celebrated and welcomed and important in our schools. And I think once that happens and every child feels the importance and that they matter and that they're, they need, need to be there and we love having them there. I think a lot of these problems will go away. So we need to make sure those kids feel that way.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer. And I'm going to turn it over to Rex so that we can go through a minute of closing remarks.
Thank you so much. So just giving all, thank you to all the candidates, giving you all the chance to give some closing remarks and some closing statements. And we're going to take it back from Ms. Sheriann Winter. Again, you have one minute if you would like to give a closing statement.
Absolutely. First and foremost, I would like to thank the Muslim Unity Center for putting this candidate form together. As I mentioned, my name is Sheriann Winter. I'm running for the West Bloomfield School Board. And I've lived in West Bloomfield for fifteen years. I have two students in the school district, a second grader and a seventh grader. And I have been super active on PTOs at the respective schools that my students attend. I have a degree in child psychology and a master's in health psychology. And I am a co-founder and co-chair for the West Bloomfield Parks and Recreation Diversity Task Force, which was up and running during the pandemic. And so I'm just very, very excited to bring diversity, equity, inclusion to the district. And I'm hoping to get your vote on November eighth for West Bloomfield School Board. We win with winter. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Winter. Appreciate you taking your time for being with us. Next, Mr. Chris Tucker, if you would like to give closing remarks.
Thank you again to everyone watching online and the Muslim Unity Center for hosting this and giving us the opportunity to introduce ourselves and answer your questions. Again, my name is Chris Tucker. I've lived in the district now for eleven years. And as I stated, I have six children in the district. And we work for you, the community, parents, teachers, students especially. We're here for you. So we will do what you need. Contact us, reach out. You can, all of the board members' emails are online, phone numbers for some as well. And I would be more than happy to answer any questions anytime. You can reach out to me through votchristucker.com or even contact me in any other way that you seem fit. Again, thank you for hosting this and giving us the opportunity to answer questions. Very excited to do this and I hope for your time on November eighth. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tucker. Next, Ms. Ernestina Moore.
Good evening again. Thank everyone for their time for the Muslim Unity Center for hosting this event. I continue to be excited throughout this campaign, campaign, and I'm even more so motivated than I was at the onset. Because I've had an opportunity to go out and campaign and meet individuals that have voiced their concerns, their approval. And disapproval of things within the district. And I think I'm a very uniquely qualified candidate to help the district move past the status quo. And to positively address some of the challenges that it currently faces. I think in this role, you need someone who is not afraid to push the status quo. Someone who's not afraid to get in and roll their sleeves up and do the hard work. Campaigning is hard work, but it's just the beginning. When you get that seat at the table, you have to take advantage of that seat at the table and use it to promote. And to assist and advocate for the parents, the student, and the community at large. And that's exactly what I plan to do. So I ask that on November eighth or before, you look towards the middle of your ballot and vote Ernestina Moore for West Bloomfield School Board. Because you will definitely get more action when I take that seat at the table. Thank you again for your time. It's must, much appreciated. And I thank everyone in advance for their support. Have a good evening.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. Next, Mr. Art Holdsworth.
Thank you. And thanks to the Muslim Unity Center. This has been a great opportunity and I appreciate it. The district is also fortunate to have several good candidates that are running and a good school board that already has been doing a great job. Several things that we've touched on tonight, I wanted to emphasize several things that I consider to be a priority. We need to make sure our teachers and staff know that they're valued and heard. There is an issue with, you know, teacher retention and a teacher shortage that we have to avoid. Want to make sure our students of all backgrounds, cultures, religions, and identities feel welcomed in our school district. Want to make sure that our staff levels can address the learning lag from COVID and give the students the individual attention they need to thrive at school and succeed academically. I want to make sure that our academic achievement continues to move West Bloomfield up in the rankings until we're number one in Southeast Michigan.
That's time. I'm sorry. Thank you so much, Mr. Holdsworth. Next, Mr. Brian Dunn.
Thank you. As a school of choice district, we are going to be judged on our academic performance in. Uh, as a school of choice district, we are going to be judged on our academic performance and how we involve our families. Those are going to be my priorities. Uh, I want to seek a a return of academic proficiency in math, reading and writing. And I want to respond to parental concerns, provide transparency for our curriculum and involve and utilize families in the educational process. We've got a lot of foundations with our district that are fantastic. We can build on those and and we can build our our district back up uh, and get it in the place where we deserve. So I'd I'd appreciate your support and your vote on November eighth. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dunn. And then lastly, Ms. Ashley Davis, if you could give your closing remarks.
Yeah. Thank you for taking the time to set up these interviews. Um, I just want to remind you that I am a lifelong resident. I'm an educator. I'm a mother of four kids in the district and I'm an involved community member. Um, with me, you get no political or personal agenda. I have a strong passion for education. And my goal will be to serve the community and make sure the needs of the kids are met and make sure the needs of the staff are met. West Bloomfield District is a great place to learn and work. I'm proud to be a part of this community and I'm proud to be a student of this community. Um, we have so many incredible programs and offerings and we lead other districts based on things that we do. I have the utmost respect for our current board and it would be an honor to join them with my experience in education and my understanding of the complexities in education along with my lifelong history in this community. And the fact that I have 15 more years of children being enrolled in this district. I would be an asset to the team and I would compliment all of the work that they've done. Um, I would keep the movement going forward towards further greatness. Please vote Ashley Davis on November eighth or on absentee ballot. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Ms. Davis. And thank you so much to all of our candidates who took time to speak to us and our community today. We appreciate you. Uh, and we look forward to hearing good news from from all of you and good luck on your elections on November eighth. Uh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Doctor, uh, Dr. Rosanna, do you want to?
Yes, yes. And now we would thank you, Rex. We're going to welcome our Birmingham School District um, panelist or candidate for this, our last section uh, for the evening. Um, do we have everyone here? Um, we have, we should be having uh, Mr. Arjack, Mr. Samuel O., uh, Nicole Spencer, Kimberly Whitman, uh, um, Bradley, Bradley Wing and Colin Zemet. Did I get everyone?
Uh, yeah, so we have everyone who responded that they will participate.
Excellent. So we can start. A kind reminder that this event is not an endorsement of any candidate or party. We are simply providing a platform for all candidates to speak to our community. This event is a strictly non-partisan event. The committee, masjid and engaged staff are attending on participating in a strictly non-partisan and non-endorse capacity. Um, a reminder that this um, is this virtual event is recorded and it is live streamed, being live streamed to YouTube. And it will be later on shared on our social media platform for the rest of our community member who are not able to attend to view and review. Um, the format, we we're going to have each, we're going to give each candidate um, one minute uh, for introduction. Uh, then there will be a round of questions, two questions to be precise. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. And then we'll close it with one minute of closing remarks also given to each candidate. We'll go alphabetically. And I'll start first and then Rex, you can take it with the first question. The first segment is you will have, each candidate will have, again, as I stated, one minute to introduce yourself. So introduce yourself, tell us why you are running and what you would like to share with us. And we'll start with Mr. Arjack.
Hi, good evening and thank you to the Muslim Unity Center uh, for hosting this event. Uh, my name is Art Jack. Uh, and just to give you a little background about myself, I'm a native of Baton Rouge, Louisiana. I attended Southern University and I live in Southfield. And raised four children that all attended the Birmingham Public Schools and all off to college. Um, my interest in running for school board is and why I'm seeking it is for a couple of reasons. One, um, over the last, and well, I actually like to start off by saying I've had great success and loved the school district. It has been uh, an excellent opportunity for myself and my family. Um, the uh, outside of the uh, the the budget and the
I have to tell it this time?
Oh, it is. Sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, move on uh, to Nicole Spencer. And you have one minute.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, I'm honored to be here tonight and am so glad for the invitation. Um, so I first want to say that I live in Beverly Hills with my husband and our nine-year-old son. Um, I am an educator with over 20 years of experience as a classroom teacher and a school library media specialist. I am currently a building substitute in the district. As a teacher, a parent and a champion of public schools, my perspective and leadership skills from the past 20 years will be a valuable addition to the board. I will advocate for excellence, equity and inclusivity for all students, families and teachers. A vote for me is a vote for strong public schools. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And uh, we have us for Kimberly Whitman, we have someone who's sitting in reading a statement. You're muted. You are muted. If you can unmute yourself, please.
Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. Hi, Dima. Hi, Dima.
Okay.
Um, and I appreciate you allowing me to read Kim Whitman's statement because she is out of town. She's currently flying um, out of the country. So I just want to say good evening and thank you to the Unity Center and the Committee for Hosting this Forum. My name is Kim Whitman. My husband and I have lived in Beverly Hills for 25 years. We have two children that are both um, deeply integrated in the BPS School District. Our daughter graduated and was very well-prepared from Groves High School for her college. And then our son is at Groves in the middle of a competitive water polo season and is doing very well. My education is somewhat unconventional in that, um, well, I'm a graduate of ULM, but I earned a CPA degree and have an MB in Resource and Management. I'm a numbers and and people-driven. I started my volunteer career at Beverly Elementary as PTA President, then treasurer. I've been active with multiple school PTAs, including the PTA Council, both as parent, um, president and board trustee.
I was Time, I'm sorry.
Time, okay. Okay.
And now, um, moving on uh, to Mr. Bradley Wing.
I don't think he's here.
I don't think he's here.
Okay. And then we're going to go uh, to Colleen Zemet. Colleen? Did I say your last name correctly, please?
Yes, Zemet.
Zemet, okay. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Colleen Zemet and I'm running for a seat on the Birmingham Public Schools Board of Education. Um, I have three kids, one who just graduated from the district last year. And I currently have two more kids in the district. So I've been a member of the district since 2009, when we moved back here primarily for the schools. I'm married to a Groves graduate. I'm running for a seat on the board because I really think we can do better. I think we can do better at um, getting back to the basics of academic and character education in this district to make sure that every single one of our students graduates BPS, prepared to head out into the workforce to vocational school, uh, out to college with the critical thinking skills and the knowledge they need to succeed in life. I also think we can do better retaining and attracting um, kids to the district. We've lost too many families and our district is at risk right now. So if we can recognize why they are leaving and do what we need to do to get them back, I think we're going to be in a pretty good place. So please remember to vote for me, Colleen Zemet, for Birmingham Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and now we move on. Rex, you want to take on the first question?
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Rosanna. Uh, so the first question that we have for all of our candidates is regarding the curriculum. Do you endorse inclusions in the curriculum? And what would you do to make sure that material used to support curriculums correctly represents minorities and does not marginalize any specific minority? Uh, and you have two minutes for the questions and we will start with uh, Ms. Colleen Zemet.
Could you just read the first part of the question? I think you said, do you support inclusions into the curriculum? Is that what you said?
Yeah. So do you endorse, uh, you know, uh, uh, Dr. Rosanna, could you, uh, are you able to clarify the content of the question?
Yes. So the question is, do you endorse inclusion in the curriculum? And what would you do to make sure that material used to support the curriculum correctly represent minority and does not marginalize any entity, any, any community members?
Okay, I, so you're talking about diversity, equity and inclusion, that kind of, okay, thank you. Um, I really think that the best thing that we can do as a district to support diversity, equity and inclusion is to make sure that every single student uh, gets the most academic, most rigorous academic instruction that they can handle. So as as the mom of three really different kids, uh, like I said, I have a a graduated student. He has had, he had an IEP in place since the third grade. Um, he got the educator, he got the special education supports he truly needed to be successful in school. And I have a high school daughter that is quite different. She she excels academically and what she needs is constant challenge. She needs to be presented with more and more rigor to do her best. And my 10-year-old, you know, uh, I think she's doing pretty well and it kind of remains to be seen what kind of students she'll develop um, into being. But the best thing we can do to support inclusion of all our different learners, no matter what type of learner they are, what type of person they are, is to treat them as individuals to tr- to give them the most rigorous academic instruction that they can handle. And that will ensure that they can ex- um, excuse me, that will ensure that they can succeed to the best of their ability.
Thank you so much for your answer. Uh, next, uh, we would like to hear from Ms. Nicole Spencer.
Great, thank you. So to me, diversity, equity and inclusion are essential characteristics for our entire school community um, and can enhance learning and teaching at all levels and can help foster a culture of belonging, participation and wellbeing that are critical to build global competence. To me, diversity encourages and rec- encourages us to recognize and appreciate our differences, allows students to consider the perspectives of others and encourages creative and critical thinking. I think that equity is key to student success and achievement, allowing for educational resources to be ta- tailored and differ- differentiated based on the specific needs of each student. And that will help reduce barriers um, and improve student achievement overall. And inclusion, I think, expands on the concept of diversity, creating an environment where students can feel like they belong. I think that's something that we all want for our children and and um, our communities as a whole is to feel um, like we belong without fear or judgment. Um, so I am a big fan of um, diversity, equity and inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Spencer. Next, uh, Mr. Art Jack. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, if you can.
Of course. So do you endorse inclusion in the curriculum? And what would you do to make sure that material used to support the curriculum correctly represents minorities and does not marginalize any group?
Yes, thank you. That's what I interpreted. So, uh, do I support it? Yes. Uh, for two reasons. One, from my professional career. I've been with Ford Motor Company uh, in Dearborn at headquarters and research. I moved in 1989 from Louisiana. That's how I got to Michigan. Um, and uh, within a global company, the world is getting smaller. And our children, as well as the teachers and families, need to learn to not tolerate DI, but embrace DI. Because that's what makes us who we are. And that's the strength of it. Within Birmingham, we we include nine cities. If you look at it in totality, it is diverse. We just have to be able to make that melting pot function much better. So not only the students, the families, but all the community gets stronger. And what would I do? Uh, I I'll just give you one example. As a parent leader, African-American family network within Birmingham schools, there was a concern we had with the curriculum for African-American history, how it was taught. And there was some discussion. It got debate, there was a debate and it did get hot. But ultimately, we sat down with the district from the superintendent all the way down uh, with with the current superintendent and we had real conversation. And that's what it's going to take as we have these different conversations in curriculums around diversity and inclusion. Let's have those conversations. Let's really understand and embrace what's being taught, how it's being taught, so it can be received and it's not misinterpreted. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jack. Uh, Dr. Rosanna, if you would like to take over for the next question?
Sure, thank you. Uh, second question is, what are the major areas uh, for improvement in your district? And what do you plan on doing to take action on this improvement? And we'll start with Mr. Arjack.
Yes, I think in in terms of areas of improvement, uh, the one pain point is student retention. And teacher retention is is a given, but student retention within our district. Because we're in a competitive environment, just like in industry or anywhere else, you have to be ready to compete. Um, again, the the district includes uh, nine, you know, nine cities and their private schools. So you have those options. And within African-American community, there's also competition because once you get to high school, there's an interest to go to, let's say CAS or Renaissance because of the scholarship opportunities and belonging. Uh, so I think as a district, we have to capitalize on our strength. We have to also recognize why uh, families are leaving so that we can maintain that retention of students. I think that is the pain point. Once we get that, because students are important to me and families and kids for everything I've done, then I think everything else will fall in order. The strategic plan, the implementation plan and the execution of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Ms. Nicole Spencer?
Right, thank you. Um, so I agree with Art that um, student loss is a problem within our district. I do think we can make an improvement on it. I think that our district can move forward um, with some of the ideas in the strategic plan such as expanding early childhood learning um, within our district as well as creating innovative learning spaces within each building that inspire um, creativity and critical thinking. Um, I also think teacher retention and teacher diversity are two um, big areas where our district can improve as well. I think in order to um, improve teacher retention, there's always um, the, if the ability exists within the budget um, to pay teachers more, I think also fostering a um, a culture of wellbeing and belonging for teachers and um, being willing to listen to their um, concerns is really important. Um, as far as teacher diversity, I do think it, um, children learn better when they're represented by the adults that are teaching them. So I think that Birmingham Public Schools can do a better job of that. Um, we can activate um, um, a marketing system that will help get teachers and diverse teachers into our candidate pool by going to job fairs, um, by using social media, um, a variety of different ways. And I think once we get them, there needs to be a strong path forward so that our teachers stay. Um, that can include a um, professional development system that's geared towards new teachers or um, pairing them up with mentor teachers so that they can actually go in and learn from them and collaborate. Um, so those are things that I think our district um, can work towards. Um, overall, we have a lot of wonderful teachers in our district, though. It's nothing um, negative to say about them. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Colleen Zemet, I'm going to go ahead.
So really, the top, the top challenge facing our district right now is it's just like Art and Nicole mentioned, um, it is retention and attraction of students. We have lost about a thousand kids over the last 10 years and it's impacting our budget. And it's really putting our district at risk. Um, it's putting our whole community at risk because people move here for the schools, people stay here for the schools. And if our schools are not performing well and if they do not have the budget to meet the needs of the students, then um, our whole community suffers. So we need to understand why students are leaving. And I've talked with so many parents over the years and gotten a real sense of why they're leaving. We do have a lot of choice. We're in a kind of a unique area where parents have um, access to private schools, parochial schools, um, homeschooling, of course, has become a more popular option, but we we have so many options on where to send our kids. Um, and so we have to compete. We have to recognize why families are pulling their kids. And primarily, they they think that other schools are serving their kids better through a more rigorous academic um, offering. And I, and I think, I think Birmingham can compete. I think we have very rigorous academics and I think we we can do better, but I think we I think we can match or exceed all the other schools out there. But people are leaving also because of a lot of the social, um, social issues that are going on in schools. And our school is really inserting itself into a lot of And our school is really inserting itself into a lot of controversial social topics and it's driving families away. They want to come back, but they want to come back to a school that focuses first and foremost on academic excellence and supporting all our students. They want our students to have equal access to all of the opportunities that Birmingham can afford to give them. And they don't want their students being placed into particular groups. They want them recognized as the individuals they are and given the respect for being the individuals that they are. So I think, I think we can manage it.
Thank you. Rex, you wanna take it on for closing?
Yeah, thank you so much to all the candidates for their in-depth answers. Uh you have, we will give you about a minute of closing remarks. Uh and we will start with uh with Ms. Colleen Zemet. Uh if you can give just some brief remarks, closing statement.
Okay, good. I didn't even unmute myself. So um uh thank you for hosting us. This is a, this is a great forum and um I was really excited to be here. So I, I'm asking for your vote on November eighth. Um I want to represent our communities and communities' interest on the Board of Education. I want to provide diligent oversight of our oper, operations. And the board must not delegate its authority to an unelected administration. We are here, the board, is here to represent the community and we need to make sure the system is working properly. So as a board trustee, I'll always remember that our focus should be on supporting academic success for every single student in our district so that they graduate with the knowledge and critical thinking skills they need to succeed in life, whether they go on to college, vocational school or the workforce. So please vote for me, Colleen Zemet.
Thank you so much. Next, Ms. Nicole Spencer, your closing remark.
Am I good now? I think I got it. Thank you. Um well, thank you again for having us this evening. Um as this new school board member, I pledge to serve my community with honesty, transparency, fairness and integrity. I vow to respect all stakeholders and strive to help guide the district to offer the best public education as possible and passionately commit to helping student achievement. I commit to listening, learning and growing as I have always done as an educator. And so if you remember to fill me in, um Nicole Spencer, however you are voting, whether it's early absentee or on November eighth, I would really appreciate your vote. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much for your time, Ms. Spencer. Mr. Art Jack?
Yes, once again, I'd like to thank you. Oh, once again, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity for all of us to come and participate within the forum. Um by Tuesday, November eighth, vote Art Jack for BPS, Birmingham Public Schools. And here's why. You know, I'll work hard and tirelessly for uh being a model of diversity, equity, inclusion. I work hard to keep our kids safe. I'll stay focused and disciplined on maintaining oversight over the budget as well as uh the laws that govern public schools. And then I want to partner with the whole community, the entire community. Back to the point I made, there are nine cities that feed into Birmingham Public Schools. And coming from the industry, I want to be able to create that link between where we have jobs and opportunities to the K-12 pipeline. There isn't enough conversation with it. But, timeout. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jack, and uh thank you to all of our candidates. Doctors Rosanna and and Doctor Dima, if you wanna give some uh brief remarks.
Thank you, Rex. And I want to conclude the, the night by thanking uh all candidates. We appreciate you, appreciate your time. Uh you are all winners simply for running for office. It takes a lot to decide to run and to make a change in your community. Thank you for everything that you're doing and good luck on November eighth. And appreciate it on behalf of everyone at the Muslim Unity Center and the Civic Engagement Community Committee. We thank you all and on behalf of Engage as well, we appreciate your time and wish you the best of luck on uh i-in the primary, not the primaries, in the general election. So you, you have a, you have a wonderful night. Thank you.